A board meeting and first thing that we want to do is call the meeting to order and approval of the agenda.
I make a motion for the agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And if you would, board members, speak up since we're in a different location so Dana can hear who's making the seconds and making the discussions, everybody can hear, so. Alright, next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. And we don't have a flag, but we do have a flag like walls. So I think we could all stand and carry on the tradition of saying.
We just have a little video clip that has that in there if you'd like to see that.
Well, sure. Throw it on there.
Because it does begin with that, Miss Sadie.
If you can pause it.
We can say it with our children.
Yeah. This is not the pledge I remember.
Good morning Bobby Ray.
My name is Caleb and this is your Star Morning Broadcast. Today's Tuesday, January 22nd. We have Keely, Maddie, and Jamaris from Stouts Home Room for Star Talk.
Please stand before the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, very good. And I think we'll get back to the board later on during the meeting. Alright, I ask for approval of the consent agenda that was sent out to everyone.
I make a motion to approve consent.
Alright, do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the consent? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, we have a consent agenda. We move on because of school being out. We do not have a student advisory report, I don't believe. We just assume everything is happy with students at the high school. Okay, and then we move on to recognitions.
We're very lucky to have you all here tonight. Thank you all for coming. And we did have two nominations of our faculty members here at Bobby Ray. So they do not know this. In fact, we just had to chase one down, I think. But what you saw just a minute ago was a clip of our morning broadcast that two teachers took it upon themselves to create this summer. They have gotten all the equipment. They train our reporters each quarter. They change them each quarter. And so, Miss Sadie Newby and Miss Lisa Bell, and just I will read very briefly nominated. Miss Sadie Newby is the Warren County Certified Employee of the Month. Sadie works tirelessly for our school as our librarian. She's a vital member of our school family. She has chaired our fall festival literacy fairs, which you saw, and hosted book fairs. She sponsors a group of third through fifth grade students who act as library helpers. She's a member of our leadership team and contributes to our overall reading progress. This year Sadie has been instrumental in developing and implementing a daily broadcast of our morning announcements. She coordinates a group of fifth grade students who act as reporters that lead the school in the pledge, moment of silence, and announcements. This changes daily and requires a sacrifice of her time in addition to her normal duties. We are so appreciative of the wonderful job Miss Sadie does every day, and especially that she is instrumental in helping our school and our students grow. We love you, Miss Sadie. And Miss Lisa Bell works tirelessly as our math interventionist. Her expertise in analyzing data and student growth drives our school's progress. She acts as a leader by chairing our back school carnival that funds our positive behavior program. She's a member of our leadership team and serves as a teacher evaluator, sharing her years of experience and success. This year Lisa was instrumental in developing our morning announcements into a daily news podcast. Student reporters lead our school in morning announcements, the pledge, and our moment of silence. She has been vital in the technical aspect of this program and has now served as a model to other schools hoping to implement this in their schools. Lisa's a valued employee and greatly deserves this recognition. Thank you all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd really like your t-shirts, too. Ms. Sonya Walker is our Director of Health Services.
And Mrs. Jill Grog, who was nominated and elected to be the Employee of the Month, classified. Jill has worked for the Warren County School System for 20 years, and in those 20 years Jill has touched so many lives as a school nurse. She has anonymously given money and donated her time outside of work to help home school families. Jill never complains. She's dependable, dedicated, and goes above and beyond. I can't say enough about Jill's dedication to her job. The last 15 years Jill has been the nurse of high school and carried approximately 1,800 students and 200 staff. Being the nurse of the high school is the most difficult job, being responsible for so many and being the only healthcare person can be overwhelming, but Jill manages without difficulty and always does it with a smile. She is so deserving of this award and I'm proud to nominate her.
Alright, all the recognitions.
I think so, they deserve it.
Alright, we move on to our operations report and we turn it over to Bobby.
First item on our agenda and operations report, Warren County Middle School Baseball Supplements. This was a request that Mr. Wilmore had made. Of course, last year we had a county basketball team that had a female coach and a male coach. And this year we're not having that program because we got into the Middle Tennessee Athletic Association Conference, so we don't have those county-wide teams now. Mr. Wilmore asked if we might be able to use the two supplements for assistant coaches for the middle school baseball because those are vacant and the middle school assistants have never had a supplement. They've just worked volunteer and worked for it. So he was asking if more would consider transferring those supplements for middle school baseball assistant coaches.
I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion to the second. Any questions or discussions? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much. The next item is, as you know, at our retreat, we had our Model UN present and had a presentation there. They have, you know, are a club at the high school that was always in need of funding, as most every club are, are his. And they have made a request for $3,000 of the board to, and they've given you in a request where those funds would go. So just passing that on to the board for your consideration or any discussion that you might have.
I have one question. We don't give to any other.
No.
If we said what kind of a request was if we were to.
Well, that's kind of what I explained, you know, is that, you know, most, well, every club is one that, you know, does their own fundraising, et cetera. And, you know, I think if we did that, then you're right.
And they did a great job.
They did outstanding.
It was wonderful. I really would like to, but I just, you know, it would be hard for us to say no if, you know, two or three more clubs.
I agree. I think that would set a precedent.
I wonder if some other way, some other form we could maybe help.
You know, I said, that's one of the things that we mentioned, and of course, with Miss Fees, you know, I talked to Mr. Walker and myself, you know, we discussed that. You know, there's fundraising efforts. I know they've done that, you know. There's, Mr. Walker can allow things at the high school, pizza sales, things of that type as well. But again, that's, you know, she asked if I'd bring that to the board for your consideration, and, you know, I said I would, but, you know, knowing that, you know, we have numerous clubs, numerous activities, things of that type. I wish we could give all, I wish we could do it all.
No, I have to agree with Helen. We just can't set that precedent.
So is there any motions at all? Okay, well, we've discussed it and we'll move on to the next topic.
Next item is our Satellite Man Healthcare. And Chris Walker is here, and she has worked pretty extensively on this. I'd like for her to kind of explain a little bit about what we're looking at here for Bobby Ray Elementary and maybe eventually West and other places in the system.
We're excited about this medical clinic and what it is. It's a telemedicine program that we partnered with Satellite Man out of Coval. Putnam County currently has three of the telemedicine programs in their schools. Went down there to her. They're doing great. So basically, we decided to put the office, the telemedicine office, in building B. I believe it's right here, and it'll be close to the nurses' office once the condition gets added. And Satellite Man will put in their own medical system nurse. And our nurses will work if we see a student. They have parent consent. We think that they need to be seen. We call the parents, ask if they can get any consent. Send them in there. They can do flu, strep. They can give some shots, steroids, or something like that. So it's going to be good, perfect for the students here and the staff, but it's for all students and staff who work in the school. So, you know, we hope that the ultimate goal is basically to improve attendance and to decrease illnesses ultimately. So hopefully this time next year, you know, if we have this in place and they start diagnosing early, flu, strep, things like that, that we can take care of, you know, take care of it immediately and help the parents that are at work. They can send in a script to their pharmacy and take that note after work if their child or whatever, and maybe they won't have to have these cases.
And the hours will be during the school hours anyway.
The process of, if there's someone there, but they're online with someone also, is that, okay. And since Putnam already has this, I assume that the vetting process of that person that's in the school is pretty thorough? Is it, did you look into that, or what did they say about that?
They are happy with the people that Satellite Man has been in there. You know, when Satellite Man is not seeing the person, the employee, or the staff member's not busy, they're working online with Satellite Man and Coval doing things. And so, they've been very happy and not having to start over and look sad there. And they're not meant to help each other, do each other's part, but he said in some instances, you know, like, we've had here with the nurses and the prison, they're busy, they can do.
So can a parent from an outlined school bring a child to get this location?
And we want them to, that's what we wanted.
And will there be, how will that, how will that access? Will there be an outside door? Does the parent doesn't have to come through?
That's what Monty and I, if she's still here, Monty and I have discussed that. There will be several parking spots along the front of the building, the new addition, and they will be able to come in through the front office and then go in directly. And the location that we decided for the Satellite Clinic will be like almost the first door in just building B. So they might be wrong in the halls and that.
It doesn't cost us anything, you know, except for space, the way I understand it.
Well, the startup process.
Oh, yes, yeah.
There is a $5,000.
Yeah, startup fee.
Startup fee.
That, go ahead, sorry.
No, it's kind of coordinated school health has gotten approval from their side directors to fund this because it's something for all students and families, and that's what they wanted. So, yeah, other than that, there is no cost to us.
So we've come out of our coordinated school health grant, state grant, then once the equipment's installed and everything's there, and they can start seeing patients. And, you know, we've talked about this for a couple of years. Flipped at various different ones. Yeah, I think it would be a good springboard and startup for us. And I think there is in the contract, you know, if something doesn't work out, then I think there's an exit clause, and there may be 30 to 60 days, you know, there in the contract. So we'll review that. I think it'd be a good opportunity to at least try. And maybe, you know, especially here, I have a lot of lower-income students here that could probably benefit, you know, from that. And if it goes well, then maybe we can expand.
I've always said, if you can bring a proposal that doesn't cost any money, it's a good one.
Yeah, that's.
It could you, and I, I get the location here, bigger population, younger kids. Is that kind of what brought that?
The combination, the central location, but the, we look at the high school, we look at the middle school, we're referring in here. And this particular office that's available was excellent. It has a private bathroom, large enough for a child, exam table, everything. And he was excited, Mr. Wilson Hayes, who was representing Satellite Man, and he was really excited when he saw that space and thought it would work best.
When we just had a wall in, in a front door there of building B, which Mr. Bennett would know those at one time were the offices there. So that is now, that first door is one large room with a closet and a bathroom. And so, I think that was what sold it. We're very tight with the prospect, but.
Yes, yes. I mean, the high school was kind of the area we were wanting. So again, we looked at first hoping that the spaces that were there, and this was really the best location for it. And I think with this new addition and the parking spots for the rest of the county that can come in here, I think it would be the safest way to, to access that clinic without having to go to the school.
Do we want a motion to proceed?
And we just need to approve the contract that was presented to you and proceed.
I make a motion to approve the contract.
Have a second?
A second.
Alright, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
Clinic.
Before you leave, while Sonya's here, we've talked a little bit about, more a little update on our illness situation, and appreciate the feedback today. But we've been kind of tracking illness here for about a better part of a week. You know, today here, especially Bobby Ray, they were up to over 20% at one point absent. They were scaling back yesterday. Of course, we didn't go to school today. So since we were out, I asked Sonya to kind of get with Dr. Chastain, our medical advisor, and some of the clinics to see, you know, where we're trending. We were trending up at the high school yesterday, at the middle school yesterday. So more than likely, you know, from what she told me today, you know, clinics are seeing more flu. So, you know, given that information and Dr. Chastain's recommendation, we, you know, close tomorrow for illness. And we've used one of our, that would be one of our weather days. I've contacted Interim Commissioner Dr. O'Shaughn and Office of Labor approved for us to use the day for illness tomorrow. And so, that's kind of how it will go. And hopefully, you know, we can get past this before it starts. We really kind of, really don't look at closing until we get over 10%. We're right at, you know, 9% right now, but, you know, like Sonya's recommendation and the doctor's work, if we can get on it early, that maybe we can get this taken care of. And I got with Donnie, all our custodians, and we're going to really try to work hard on cleaning all the schools tomorrow to do the best we can to, you know, get the environment as clean as possible for Monday. So that's kind of where we're at. So anything else?
Good deal. Any questions for Sonya?
Well, keep up the good work.
I agree, yeah. Like a wise man said, nip it.
Definitely trying to do that. Definitely going to do that. Alright, let's see if I can get down to the next item. I wanted to see if I can move the board around a little bit where you all can kind of see. I think I provided this information before you do in your packet as well. The next two items we'll discuss are some that we had discussed from the last board meeting. We did the online survey to determine, you know, feelings from students, from teachers, from parents, community members, staff members, on their feeling on three real, three questions. Online report cards, student grades, using Ten Ready, Ten Ready results of student grades, and reward systems. If students improve year to year, you know, would they rather have a reward system? So, you know, we got pretty telling results there. We had 1,409 responses, which I thought was pretty good for the survey. You can see the percentages there. We had 41%, I was really encouraged with that, 41% were students in grades 38 who responded to the survey. So I sent that out, you know, it was in the paper. I also sent that out to every staff member and asked them to kind of get students involved with that. So I thought that was really good. On the first question, you know, would you prefer all of your report cards and student progress reports online? Well, you can see 58.9% said no, 41.1% said yes. So, you know, that's, most people like to, you know, about hack and hack. You know, some like the electronics, some like, you know, the paper. So that's, I think, something that we can take a look at. Maybe going forward with next year, we want to make sure that we're trying to do more online registration. So more people we can get in the system, maybe they can become comfortable with that. And there will be less report cards we have to print and more that they can gain access on. So any questions on the online? Any feelings either way on that one? You know, I would hope, I would kind of hope that that would be better, that we might be more online than paper. But, you know, I know there's some folks that just, you know, don't have that online access and need that paper, so.
What other counties are online, do you know?
I really don't know. I really haven't, you know, asked other sick attendants I can, you know, see what we can do about that. But, you know, we're, I think we're getting more people on Skyward, so checking that. And, you know, the good thing about that, if they get access and are on, not only do the registration part, but then they can check their students' grades daily. And they can get on, you know, emails daily of where their students are performing, which is good. That's what we want, more student involvement. Okay, so the next two questions were about Ten Ready testing that we discussed and some of the comments that were made, you know, from teachers, you know, especially from the high school, last board meeting. Do you feel that Ten Ready test scores should be used in students' final grades? Well, I think that's pretty telling. You know, no, the overall was no, that it shouldn't be. And then if you flip the, flip the page about final grades, or would you like to see some sort of reward system for students that show improvement on Ten Ready testing? And everybody likes the reward system, you know, rather than the grades. So, you know, I think that's good. I think that's good information to have. You know, if we have students, we want to put something out there for them to reach for. You know, and then I broke it down a little bit further in the results so that you can see, you know, how many responses we had. Teachers grade K-8, 912. Students, oh, it's really, again, really encouraged. You know, 38, we had 508 students who took the survey. That's, that's good. You know, 912, we only had 145. You know, teachers, had more teachers in 38 than 912, only had 87 there. You know, there was 72% of that was yes on the online report cards and 26% no. So I'll go through each one of those. Parents had, 264 parents respond, 64 community members and staff members. So, again, good, good information there that's broken down. Final grades question, there again, you know, some of the teachers that were there at the, for representing the high school only had about 23 that, you know, weighed in on that subject. So hopefully we'd have more. 101 on 38. You can see the students there on the assessment, you know, portion, and parents, again, you know, I feel, I've talked to a few parents that, you know, still don't have a lot of confidence in Ten Ready results there and their community members. But reward programs, you know, was kind of the overall winner, I guess. Again, it's just really flop, flip-flop that, you know, should have some sort of reward system to reward students for moving forward, growth. That doesn't mean being proficient or advanced, but that means moving, you know, from, you know, basic to approaching, or approaching to the other, but to show improvement. And we kind of investigated a little bit on that, but, you know, on that note, I would really, just a suggestion, you know, like to get some student involvement. What would they like to see, you know, in a reward system? You know, what are high school students like? What are elementary students like? And, you know, see where we're at on that. So, any, is there any questions you all have on results or surprises that thought might have popped up there?
I appreciate the survey, especially the way you brought it, broke it down. And it does give a, I think we can be kind of close-minded sometimes when we think, oh, yeah, everything should be online, you know, but then you realize, not, not everybody thinks the way I do. And that's good. But, yeah, so that's, that's really good. And I think it is really telling. And no one trusts the system.
Right. Well, I think that's, you know, I think we're seeing that with the statewide right now. If we can get a really assessment system that works, you know, not a lot of faith in that online or on paper right now.
But I, I do think, I mean, it's some way to get, because I think what we saw, especially at the high school with lack, very lackluster performance, is that if we could, if we could find some type of student involvement that helps us and helps them to realize, hey, this is important, and how do we make sure you and your peers think that it's important?
Absolutely, absolutely. I do have the progress reports, you know, from the high school for the second quarter. I wanted to try to bring to you each month. Right now in ELA 1, their on-track mastery is at 21.8%. AMO for that area is 36.6 for EMA ELA, so they're working toward that. English 2 is better. It's at about 61% for this second benchmark that we've done. And then, so the total is at 41.8. So like I said, the AMO is 36.3. So they're a little bit above the AMO prediction right at the present. the AMO prediction, uh, right at the present. And then, with math, of course, that's the area that we've kinda struggled in, uh, we're at about sixty percent on the second assessment in Algebra one, sixty percent in geometry, and sixty-seven percent in Algebra two. So, our AMO there is twenty-four point four percent, so I would say, right now, we're a little bit high on the estimate there, I think it probably needs to get closer to that to kinda be more valid, I guess you'd say. So, we'll keep working on, on the, uh, On Track and Mastery part there at the high school with that. So, that, that's the report that we've got so far, so each month I'll bring you back that report, and Carl is monitoring that, uh, as well. Any, any, any others, you have any comment on anything else going on?
Well, continuing, the high schools have the, you know, uh, work they've done this year is, you know, in place, but it's something that is being looked at, you know, in the history of, in the context, we, sometimes they, you know, with updates, also with the instructional approaches with the updates there. So, it's something that they've been working on all year long, and it's something that we know we must keep working on, all the way up to testing and pretesting. So, our, our, our goal is for our, for them to go off this year with the testing with no issues, and see where we stand.
Uh, so, I guess back to the percentages and things of that, uh, you know, the state does allow us to use test scores as part of student grades, so, is that something that the board wants to entertain, to do that, or have we seen the results, or how have you known to approve of that, or not?
What did you, what's the difference? If we do versus if we don't, and what does, I guess, does it hurt any time, or does it mean?
Well, the, uh, what would happen would be, we don't get our scores back until the Tuesday before we get out of school. So, the last, uh, day, get over here to the policy. So, the, um, if we get those scores back, then we have to determine a conversion scale for that, and then that would be plugged into our system in the scholar, and that would be used in the student grade. So, it can be from, really from zero percent to twenty-five percent. I think elementary three five is, is zero percent to twenty-five percent, six eight is fifteen percent to twenty-five percent, and then, uh, high school, I believe, is fifteen percent to twenty-five percent, so that could be used. Um, you know, it is, it would be, you know, part of that student's final grade, uh, we just have to compute that and get that in. Uh, that might, you know, cause us to, depending on how fast we can get that done, if we get the data back when they say we're gonna get it back, then we might have to hold report cards, you know, for students. And that was one of the reasons why we asked the question about online, it'd be a whole lot easier to produce it online than it would be, you know, to produce it in paper.
Would it, I know the argument that we have is, is, we say we don't trust it and just don't do it, or, uh, we're, we're going to go forward with this, and we're gonna trust that it happens this time, uh, and hopefully the, the students get behind it. Is there, is there, uh, another alternative, I don't know, uh, looking at the survey results, where they like the positive, but, but not the negative, is, is it part, the one thing that students love is extra credit? Is there any way to just turn this thing into, uh, i- if you do really well on it, it can be an extra credit to, to your grade? Has anybody thought of that?
I, I think that could be part of the reward system. I mean, that could, could be part of that, I hadn't investigated that, but I can see. Uh, did investigate how many schools in Upper Trumpo hold report cards and use it, none of them were using it in student grades, you know, I think Cookland told me they did hold report cards one time, and it didn't go well, you know, but, I mean, I...
I imagine it would.
No, no, no. Uh, most time when people leave, they don't wanna come back until, you know, or the next day at school. Well, I mean, we can, definitely, I think the reward system might be something in, if we can get student involvement and student buy-in, and students tell us what they're willing to work for, then I'm always willing to work for more.
Would, would y'all take the test a lot more serious if you were getting extra credit for it?
There you go, I've mouthed it.
There you go.
Could, uh, could maybe next month, they come up with a formula for the extra credit or somehow?
Sure, we can work on that.
Maybe even work on that, just kinda see how we can progress.
So, you'd rather not have it in your grade?
Yes.
What if you went backwards, if you get negative credit? No, I don't like that either.
You like the carrot, but not the stick.
If we, I know we're kinda lumping this testing with the state this year, but I, I think one thing that, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I'd like to ask you to look into, uh, us pursuing doing the ACT with the state, instead of doing the Tennessee Ready, do the ACT.
Sure.
And, that way we know for sure that we're gonna get that ACT back in, in two to three weeks and know all the results. Then, if we knew for sure that we could do, then we could, then the grades could be related to, cause we got the sound structure provided.
I, I agree with that, and I know there's legislation that will probably be produced, you know, to do that, I, I can get, right now, I think the legality is of doing, there's not an opt-out for districts for Ten Ready, we would still have to, you know, do that, but if there was legislation that was produced, we could do that.
Look, I, I'd like to one step further, I'd like to ask you to, with the board's permit, rest of the board's permission, to send a letter to Representative Sherrill, Senator Ball, Senator Bailey, to express our concern for doing the ACT.
Wow, we'd be glad to, we'd be glad, wouldn't even, wouldn't draft a resolution if the board's, you know, wants to take a vote on that, and, you know, we'll draft a resolution and send that with a letter, that's not a problem. I don't think that's a bad, you know, a year ago, I, I, I probably would've been in a different place on that, but the more I've kinda researched that, and, you know, students have buy-in, you know, to ACT, it's, you know, they're going to college, then that's, that's, that is the test, uh, that counts, you know, we've had a hard time with the Ten Ready test working, uh, that's for sure, don't really know if the results are valid, ACT can get the results back, you know, nationally within ten days, disaggregated in there, you know, we have a pipeline already with our eighth grade program building for ACT, so we've got the building on us there, so I'm, I, I'm good with that.
Go, go ahead, I, I, I think we're, we're, let, let's go another report from the front line, let's ask Mr. Curtis, what, what are your thoughts on this?
I'd definitely like to see the ACT used, uh, that is the one that, you know, what students that we already have buy-in for that, and how they perform, is tied in as a guarantee in the lottery money, for example, the one that is the state goal. We are starting to work for that now, from eighth grade on, so, uh, I mean, everything is in place, you know, for that, uh, we could develop benchmarks, and we could have AMOs based on, you know, the scores that are, that are coming in, so, uh, I think if students would know, and they've had, you know, most of us have students, you know, come through, our children, you know, where we know, you know, ACT, and what it can give for our students, so I think we would have the buy-in, I think students and parents both would have buy-in to that, and that would be, we could...
I say we make the motion, I make the motion, have we, draft a resolution?
I'll, I'll, I'll second that, but if it's time for discussion, I wanna ask Bobby, you, of course, you're in close contact with your, uh, professional peers, and we're just days into the new administration, the Bill Lee administration, we do have our Commissioner of Education designated, have you gotten any intelligence or any sense of direction about what this new administration's gonna do with TN Ready?
I have not, uh, you know, Dr. Schwinn is, well, I understand it, not on-site yet, Dr. Alshai is still acting interim commissioner for at least a couple more weeks. Uh, we do go the first week of February to our Legislative Learning Conference, I assume I'll learn more there, uh, we've not heard anything from the administration about testing or the department, as of yet, other than status quo.
Well, I'm, I, well, I'm, I'm expecting some changes, you know, the TN Ready was a, was an area of very strong committed focus by the previous administration chair, so I don't know whether that's wanting to continue or expect something new, so we'll, we'll see, but I, I, I support the resolution.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Alright.
I'll stand, we'll move that direction, I think that's a good suggestion. Um, the next item we have on our agenda is a proposal by Mr. Harum, Mr. Harum is here for the band, uh, trip, uh, coming hopefully in June of twenty, or July of twenty, June of twenty. Would you like to, they, they've had a copy of this, so would you like to paraphrase that, or how would you like to present?
Well, I mean, we're, we're talking about reward programs and all the other things that we can do for our kids, and admittedly, you know, if you say that a motion before the board that requires no money of you all is a good motion.
There you go.
That could go a lot of ways, but, um, you know, it, most of, all of our trips have always been self-funded, uh, fundraising and all these other things, it is an expensive trip, but it's also giving our kids, these, these band kids, something that they'll never forget, and that they can always look back to. I know I, I have lots of kids that have parents that were in Mr. Chuket's band, and they went to Mexico City, they still talk about Mexico City, or they still talk about New York, or they still talk, whatever it is, they always reference those points. Um, and this, this would give us opportunity, one, to perform three different places in three different times while in Hawaii. Uh, we will perform in a national, well, not national, a, a state marching, basically festival, um, it would be very much an experience of cultural enrichment, so they could see this other culture, cause it is a cultural parade. Um, we would probably be one of the most different things there, but they would get to experience something new. Uh, we would perform in the USO Missouri, and we would perform in the entrance center, I believe, to, uh, the, um, the World War II exhibits. So, three different performance opportunities for the group, um, the cost would be mostly funded from fundraising, um, however, I, I've told the kids that I want all of us to go, because we can't require field trips, but this one I want all of us, the, the band's model is one hundred percent, and I'm looking forward to trying to get one hundred percent of our people from here to go and experience something for five days that will change their lives. So, that's what we're looking at, a company that, um, uh, we're, we're going, or at least looking at going through Gateway is, um, ha, was actually recommended to me from a friend of mine who has gone on this very similar trip, and his kids also really enjoyed it. It's a much different experience, they're from Atlanta, so it's a different environment that they're from, um, but I think with the year and a half that we have to give the fundraise, it's, it's a possibility.
Any motion? Uh, yeah, I think so. I, I'm, I'm making the motion, and, uh, we attempt the band proposal to go to Hawaii.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
About how many students have we told?
Eighty-five, and, um, we have a small senior class this year, hopefully we have about thirty kids in eighth grade, they will be involved in fundraising as well, so potentially up to a hundred and seven hundred and fifteen.
I think they'll probably need a super attendant for the band.
There's the tour chaperone.
Maybe the board!
Be involved.
Well, go ahead, uh, I was the chaperone at one of your trips, though, how, and I sitting at a restaurant with my old group of band students, one of them got their plastic cup and started going, using their straw, a sound, and they just kept doing it, and another one started drumming on the, and they had, they made their own little, and I, I said right then, band kids are the coolest, and, uh, I'll, I'll always remember that, so, uh, so, anyway, all of those in favor? Any opposed? Alright.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. Thank you, know what you do, appreciate that. I think the last item we have on our agenda is our voiceover committee discussion, uh, I think you've got the information, uh, in your packet that I provided to you, discussed it at the retreat, uh, just a summary of this, we bid this project, uh, on three one, I believe, and I had a discrepancy in the bids, uh, there were three bidders, one was out of the scope, uh, one, uh, processes were varying in range, equipment varying in range, so we pulled that back together, uh, bid apples to apples, equipment to equipment, six one of eighteen, uh, and that's the bid that we currently have now, we've had presentations, uh, about, you know, each of those, uh, providers, what they could do, so, you know, the chairman, it's, I've provided all the information I can provide, or, uh, whatever direction you have, is if we move forward with one of these companies, or we wait to do something else, or abandon it altogether.
Right, right. Uh, what would be the timeline, I mean, remind us again of the timeline of when we would implement, either way we go, we'd start implementing it in the summer, or?
Yeah, we would have to set out a timeline and start implementing, probably in the summer, uh, I believe, Katrina, that'd probably be what you would suggest.
Unless we start the central office or...
Okay, we could probably do that.
Is, 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 is right now go time, though, do we need to make this move now, or if we wanna, what, what would be the timeline going forward?
I mean, as long as it's done before May, I mean, we just need to, you know, April or May, then we would need to, you know, that way we can move forward with the planning, you know, the quicker we can get it done, the quicker we can plan, and, uh, we'll move forward that way.
You know, looking at the bottom line, it's the bottom line, but, and then we look at some of the, uh, other things involved in making this decision, I think Bill has some information they want to share.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me apologize for, for arriving late, I was literally a captive audience, uh, at the, at the seat in the building, uh, at St. Thomas, uh, Rutherford, and just got here as quickly as I could, I did see the speed limit just a little bit, no, no bad...
Your old camera.
Oh, yeah, nobody self, nobody self-disclosing, that was not in the school system.
But, but I appreciate your indulgence, second, I, I'm sure you've already remarked on the, uh, the makeover of the Bobby Ray Memorial Elementary School Cafeteria, I think it's wonderful, Ms. Hillis.
How beautiful.
This, this, this is the kind of environment that our kids deserve.
That's right.
Dairy Queen, everybody, I love it. But I, I, I do wanna apologize for being late, I have, and I, I wanna pass these out, here's one for you, send, send one down to Bobby if you would, and doing that, um, I think I have enough copies here for everybody, if not, we'll do a little sharing. One of the things I think we need to think about when, when we enter into this discussion is, um, we got, we got two, in my opinion, two major considerations. One is probably on the emotional side, we would, I think naturally prefer to work with a, with a local vendor that's employing local, here's the, uh, employing local and people in, people in nearby counties. Um, the other, of course, is the cost, and these, these are the two considerations, and there is a, a very substantial difference in cost, startup cost, recurring cost, the service charges, things of that sort, but I think we should, as a board, put this in the scales, and look at some of the value added that Binlom and Connect brings to our community. A lot of these are, are intangible, you, you can't put a dollar figure on it, but, uh, I would like for this to be in the record with your approval, Mr. Chairman, to make this part of the minutes of the meeting. And, uh, this memo comes from Lisa Coe, the General Manager and CEO of Binlom and Connect. Uh, just going quickly through the bullet points, they provide video service and approximately a hundred and fifty set-top boxes to the school system, they support the Citizens for Progress Scholarship Program, implementation and continued support of WCS TV, channel one eighty, which is a, a great outreach and awareness opportunity for our schools and for our students, uh, work-based learning partner, I think we have one, uh, student in, in that, uh, program, uh, cooperation between the Warren County School System and BLTV, channel six, in disseminating information to Warren County, and that's very useful, uh, if we have some emergency or, or urgent situation. Uh, procreing exams, their, their employees volunteer for procreing exams, they participate in Read Across America, teacher appreciation... They participate in Read Across America, teacher appreciation meals, prioritize response to any needs or issues. Also various sponsorships for clubs, programs, and sports teams. And probably the newest enhancement to the Pioneer's Fan Experience, Charlie Dalton Gym is the big, I think Jumbotron's probably a trademark term, but let's call it a big video display there. And it's working beautifully, and they are one of the sponsors, one of the business sponsors. I just think that these, these things need to be considered. Now, whether these intangibles, the value added outweighs the additional cost, I think that's something for every board member to think about. Personally, I'm a pretty heavy user of Ben Lomond Connect services at my office at home, and will continue to do that. If I, as an individual, make the conscious decision to pay more for a product or service than a competing vendor could provide, that's my situation. I have nobody to answer to but myself. As a member of this board, we are all stewards of the public's money. And we live, and will always live, in a situation of constrained resources. So, that's the other consideration. I don't, I don't think that as a member of the board, I am free just arbitrarily incline one way or the other on this. I think we've gotta think about our constituents and the taxpayers and how our limited resources can be best used for the benefit of our students. So, those are considerations, and I just, I think that's the situation we're in. Maybe that's the definition of a dilemma. But I think it's essential that we consider this. We honor and respect and appreciate the longstanding collaborative relationship we've had with Ben Lomond Rural Telephone Co-op and Ben Lomond Connect, and we'll always appreciate that and what they've done for our community and what they continue to do for the community. But we've got various things to consider. So, with that said, did everybody got a copy? Everybody got a copy?
Are they willing to negotiate the price any lower, to be more competitive?
Well, I had a conversation along those lines with Ms. Coke and with Brian Kell, who's the marketing director for Ben Lomond Connect. And at that time, I didn't know whether the proposals we had in front of us came as a result of just an informal ask, just Bobby saying, "Would you mind to send us, you know, a proposal?" Or if it was a result of a formal request for a proposal. That puts us in a different situation, Lee.
Well, doesn't it really go, because, is this not a cooperative bid? And they're basing this on Metro Nashville's bid?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm not sure that either bidder could come back and revise the bid. I mean, is Rob, Robin, Robin, let's get your opinion, is there legal advice?
Yes, I think that it is, I mean, we did it as a bid and request for production, and that would not allow us to renegotiate it past that point.
So, do we have to make a decision tonight?
I don't think, I'm sorry?
No, you can take it.
No, you don't have to make a decision tonight. The one thing that I do, I mean, going to what you guys said just now, I did look at, there's not a lot of information on the 81 Act is usually basically done by the manual, which is done by the committee. But there are some things about purchasing that, you know, you do need to, now that are in the law. It's Section 5-21, 119. And there are two things I think we need to just bear in mind. And that's, Section 2 says, "No purchase or contract shall be made where the bid prices exceed the current market price for the same merchandise or service." And then number three, which is purchases in contract shall be awarded by some lowest and best. And so, of course, you can, it doesn't have to be lowest, but it needs to be lowest and best. Best can apply lowest. But those are the, those are the constraints by statute. And our manual does not speak any further to that as far as, you know, what we would consider as, you know, as to what Bill said. But those two things, I think you do need to be aware of. The statute does specify when you consider what you want to do.
And also, whatever decision is made by the board, it still has to go to financial management for a period.
Robin, would you read that first item again? There were two, there were two provisions. Read that first item again, that had to do with market.
Okay, it says, "No purchase or contract shall be made where the bid prices exceed the current market price for the same merchandise or service."
So, did E&amp;A establish a market price?
Well, you know, I don't know, that's something that we need, I don't know that it does, if there's just two. But I mean, I'm just listening to y'all say that there may be some discrepancy, sort of large discrepancy between two. So, I mean, what was the third, the third one we just kicked out?
The third one didn't meet specs.
Okay.
The third one didn't meet specs. So, we narrowed it down to two. The two prices were, on the bid, were Ben Lomond's bid and then E&amp;A's bid. And they, E&amp;A has two bids that they produce. One, it's a Metro Nashville piggyback bid that we can piggyback off of, which is a lower price. And then the MPT National bid, that's just like a buy board, you know, bid as well. It's a national bid, it's out there for anybody, it's already bidding. So, those were the two prices that they gave us in the book that you have. So, I don't know, I don't know if there is a market price, I don't know what that might be.
So, should we not choose the lowest bidder? How do we prove that that's the best product? I mean, who do we go to?
Well, that's, that's, well, I would have to go to financial management.
Is that financial management?
You know, the board, well, the board would have to say, "This is why we're choosing, you know, this bid."
And you don't choose low and.
You'd have to just to buy the higher bid.
Okay, do you, do you have, do you have the calculations in front of you, Robin?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you just go over that, the Ben Lomond and the E&amp;A? Let's just go over that.
Okay, they're tough on the board here. Same thing that's in your packet. So, the monthly cost of the bid was $10,072.41. Divide that by twelve, that's $128.68.92. Their equipment cost for installing all the equipment will be $83,724. Any labor and installation is $12,234. So, the total one-year cost will be $216,831.86 for the installation year. And then after that, the monthly cost will be this, for three years. We bid a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. So, that's, will be locked in to that cost right there. And then the same holds true for the Metro Nashville contract with the E&amp;A in their bid. You can see the cost there is seventy-two, or seventy-five, fifty-two, seventy-five. Just put a comma and certain period, sorry about that. Divided by twelve is $90,633. The equipment cost is $36,583. Labor and installation, $10,139,267 for year one. And then the annual cost will be the seventy-five, fifty-two, seventy-five for the three years and one, two one-year extensions of the contract. And then if we were to use the National bid, it's a little bit lower. I'm not for sure actually we can use the National bid, because the commission, that's not one that they approve. They would have to approve the use of that National bid. There are various ones, temp haps, buy board, things of that type that the commission's already approved. So, this was one that E&amp;A had put in the package. I really don't, you know, that we would wanna consider that, because County Commission, right now, as we sit today, could not approve that bid. So, it would need to be the piggyback off the MPNS or MNPS bid or Ben Lomond?
Bobby, on what, Mr. Bill was talking about, you also put some questions in our packet.
Yes, yes.
I think each one of us needs to reread, I'm sure you've looked at those packets as far as the responses to the questions of Ben Lomond versus E&amp;A responses.
Right, I asked three questions there. You know, basically, some of the things we discussed in the retreat. During the term of the contract, would we have any needs or services? Is that no fault of the district? Would there be a charge provided? And you can see, you know, the answers from both, I mean, I won't answer, go through and read all of them, you've got them in front of you. But I wanted to know if there was any fees there? If, if we need service on phones, what would the fees be if there was service on phones? And then, would there be any other monthly charges that we didn't know about? And ask E&amp;A that, you know, question, Ben Lomond the same question, and they've provided you the answers, you know, there to that. So, again, trying to compare apples to apples, you know, ask everybody the same question, the same equipment.
Your opinion on that, Ellen, or is the.
I'm just trying to.
To look at it.
To look at.
You know, if the board needs time, would we do any harm to ourselves if we rolled this to the February meeting?
Can table it at the February meeting, that's what the board wants to do?
Well, I just, I want the board to consider that, to go back and look at the responses to the questions. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, but I need that extra time to go back and just really do some soul searching about this. But I do understand from Robin, our attorney, that we would have to have some justification to go with a higher price. And that, of course, the Financial Management Committee has the final.
Katrina, wanna say something?
Yes, I just wanna say that I don't think everybody, I mean, Ben Lomond is wonderful, but I don't think people realize what E&amp;A does. It was, they, I remember one year, like, two years ago, there was a lady that had cancer and was in the bed and couldn't see her child grow up. And we couldn't, we didn't have a line on that football field. Well, they came up here that day and ran it for us. And Max started speeding up and made it work. And that was so Ben Lomond, they were working with them, you know, to make that work. And they always give money to all kinds of things within E-Rate. Now, we have E-Rate constraints, that companies can't do everything. It's, that's like, you know, you're swaying on your way and you can't do that, that's against the policy, and you get trouble for that. But I do wanna say that they're, they're very much doing things for our whole state, that's amazing.
And there, the technical, Katrina, they provide, of course, our data service.
Right.
But as far as the technical capability and.
It's wonderful, it is amazing.
Amazing.
If we didn't have it, we'd be in trouble.
Now, what about, what about if you have a network failure, some kind of fault? I mean, how responsive have they been?
They're calling me first. And when a school is down, they are calling me, you know. This week, Morrison, somebody cut a line underground, and there's nothing, you know, that does take some time, because their security area has to get underground and fix it. And that's not their fault, but they're managing getting that person. Because I remember when I first started years ago, it wasn't so weak. And we might be down through four days. And so, it's, it's amazing.
When you say they're calling you, that means they're calling you to let you know.
That the school is down.
They're gonna take care of this.
At three o'clock in the morning.
So, they're aware before you are?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
They monitor all this from there.
That's right.
I guess called in Nashville.
That's right, and they would do the same with us.
I believe you said that we have a local person.
Yes, we do, it's Regina's.
So, we've got someone in local.
Yes.
Is there a motion to be made at this point?
I'll move to table the issue until the February meeting.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion further? All those in favor of tabling? Any opposed? All right.
All right, two other items, Mr. Chairman, on your desk or in a folder. I think Mr. Pierce has provided the recommendations for the textbook committees for this year in social studies. And I just need to ask for the board's recommendation for these teachers to serve on the textbook committee.
All right, any discussion on this, or do we have a motion?
I make the motion, please to the serve.
All right, have a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we have a committee.
Yes, we do, we have a committee, that's a good thing. One, other just update in other business, well, really two, two updates. One in other business and one, right. As I asked at the County Commission meeting, just wanted to follow up with the board on this. We get updates annually from federal government regarding shutdown and how that would affect us. So, right now, with school nutrition, that would be the area that we could probably be affected. Latest update that I received is that we will have funds to operate through the month of March. And then, there's a possibility if the shutdown is not resolved by then, then we would have to start getting into our reserves at the school nutrition level and possibly the district level. Because if we don't have funds in school nutrition and we have to provide that happen, then that, our fail-safe there is general purpose. So, through March, we should be fine right now. And any other updates that I get, I've not been updated on anything through federal programs with state funds coming in right now. So, just wanted to give you that update.
In response to that, Mr. Chairman, you know, Ms. Anderson, our newest board member, and I will be in DC starting this weekend and through Tuesday. We'll be talking to our elected representatives, and I think one of the, one of the key issues we're gonna talk about is student nutrition and keeping the community eligibility program funded. We are in this, this situation of uncertainty. We think we're on solid ground through March, but, you know, I for one would, would say that feeding, feeding our students, feeding the kids is a, is a very high priority if we do have to go into reserves. Because we may, we may be the last backstop. But Sue and I will make the case, as well as we can, if we're in on that bad weather and have some travel problems. But we will, we will be talking about student nutrition in Washington.
Is there any other subject you'd like for us to talk about?
Funding in general will be good. That's always a good topic to talk about, you know, more than less is good. So, there was at one point in time, you know, a discussion of doing away with Title II funds, which is professional development funds, which that would really cripple any professional development that we have. So, any, any discussion with legislators, legislators in Washington about maintaining our entitlements, and especially Title II funds, would be greatly appreciated. One last item, okay, in your packet, the coveted 2019-20 calendar that we have always a hot topic of obsession. After Christmas, everybody wants to know when school's gonna start. So, next year. So, this is in draft form. If you are okay with the format, I really based it on the normal format that we have, starting in August, ending in May, spring break, fall break, Christmas break, virtually the same timeframe, normal holidays, et cetera. But we approve this in our February meeting. So, if you are okay with the format, I'd like to send this out to staff to get feedback and go from there.
I have one question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The biggest feedback that I got from parents was the Thanksgiving holiday and that Monday was the only day that they went to school. was the only day that they went to school, and they really felt like that was a lost instructional day because the children are ready and geared up for the holiday. Is there anything we can do about it?
Well, we've played around with that, you know, a couple of times. We've taken the whole week off of Thanksgiving before. You know, kind of doing that is our fall break, you know, then most people like to have fall break in October. I agree, the reason we put the instruction or the in-service day is because if we take off on Wednesday, we're going to have staff take off on Tuesday. If we take off on Tuesday, we're going to have staff take off on Monday. So it's just, it's a snowball effect. You know, it is, I agree a hundred percent, it's a wasted instructional time because we have, you know, staff that start the holiday early, students that start the holiday early. We can look at that, and that's something we can get feedback from people on. I just don't know a good way to solve it.
You're going to take another day away somewhere else.
I know this will not be popular, and it's probably not the answer, but I would rather push graduation another day as to have, lose that instructional day just because of that Monday. I don't know.
Well, we've had a request already from the high school about, you know, altering the, making graduation day the last day of school, because right now, Thursday's the last day of school, and Friday is graduation day. We did that last year, it fell in the calendar that way because if we make it on the, if we have the abbreviated day, usually graduation practice is going on, you know, like at ten o'clock that day, and then students are trying to leave the middle school, and it's a parking nightmare, traffic nightmare. So it worked out better for, you know, finish abbreviated day on Thursday and do graduation, they can do their graduation practice. That was one of the considerations. But I think they've made a request, and I haven't read it all, but to make it the same day.
I remember we had something, but I don't remember exactly what it was, and we fixed it this year, about them coming back to school after the first of the year. So does this take care of that? Or this does?
Yes, that was, they like to have the hot, the second off. And we did that this year, we took the second off.
Coming back on Friday.
And came back on the Friday with professional development day. And then that would kind of be virtually the same, I think, in January of twenty, there's the calendar in the back. We'd come back virtually the same way. We'd have off the second, PD day on the third, and then students would come back at six.
Students could solve it two weeks.
Yes, students could solve it two weeks.
All right.
So if you're okay, we'll send that out, you know, for public review and, you know, feedback, and then bring it back at the February meeting.
Okay. Any other comments to add? I don't think we're really in a motion, just thumbs up and we're...
If you're doing that, that's what we'll do.
All right. Anything else from operations? Bobby?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to our committee, curriculum and achievement, the late Bill Zegman.
Well, glad to be revived to be among good friends, honorable school and education leaders here. We've got just one item this evening, a policy item, this is on second reading, this is the sexual misconduct, JCVH. We discussed this at our last meeting. Basically, it says sexual misconduct will not be tolerated by any student on any school property or at any school-related activity or event. And drop on down to line seven. Line seven says, all incidents of sexual misconduct must be reported immediately to the director or his or her designated. All reports will be investigated and appropriate disciplinary action will be taken. So this does include that reporting requirement. So I want to move for adoption, second reading of the policy, JCVH.
I'll second that.
All right. Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we have a policy. We'll move on to facilities and resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In facility and resources, we talked about the West Elementary, the bid will go out this week, hopefully that'll be the third day of Friday. We also talked about Bobby Ray. We did a little tour of Bobby Ray before we started the board meeting, and also they were talking about the color selection for Bobby Ray for building B. We also talked about the cooking at the sprinkler system at the central office, and that will be brought back to us, what the cost will be. Also took in consideration and looked at a proposal by the Dible PTO about making the sound system better in their cafeteria, and that will also be brought back to the board. We also talked about the traffic signals at Dible and Bobby Ray and West, taking a look at that. And also talked about the fencing, will be going out to the beds. Also talked about the, at the high school, security and on going on there. And I believe that I have listed anything that takes care of the facilities report, Mr. Chairman?
I think we're one motion.
We're one motion?
Oh, the sprinkler system. The sprinkler system, we did motion out of committee to go move forward with the sprinkler system, so we'll need to do that in forward.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that thirty-five thousand dollars approximately is the...
All right, Laura.
You said just a bid or...
Yeah, we'll need to do the research and go out for bid, and hopefully it'll come back at that. So yeah, we just need to bid, the motion to research the power.
We don't need a dollar amount of bid.
Not as a bid. But that's the approximate estimate.
So the motion's been made?
Yes.
In a second. All right, all those in favor? Okay. On the traffic lights, is that moving forward, or do we need a motion on that?
We can probably go ahead and have a motion to look at that as well. I think we did do that in committee as well.
Okay.
From Dana's minutes.
Hey, do I have a motion to move forward with the traffic lights of Bobby Ray and Dible and West? Have a motion?
There's a second?
Second.
Second. All right. So motion to move forward with traffic light implementation of schools. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to adjournment, and again, my apologies, we got a year late, but on the, under operations, this request from the Model United Nations group at the high school, was that discussed or what?
Yeah, he was discussing.
Failed for lack of motion.
We just do not want to set a precedence with other clubs.
Well, and I understand that. And I think we all support Model United Nations.
Oh, yeah.
We've seen, we've seen that some are really pride to take to the students, and now it's giving them an opportunity to grow and develop. But I understand, I understand.
Do we have any other committee reports, or you want, go ahead.
No, no committee report, just one other.
Okay.
I'd just like to, again, recognize our colleague, Ms. Helen Martin, for being elected to the United States School Board, Board of Directors. I think it's an honor for our county for her to be there. I think well deserved.
Very well, yeah.
Have we ever had, have we had people report?
Wonderful.
Mr. Mansfield did, started.
All right.
So we're very proud.
Very proud.
Good job, Helen.
You'll represent us well.
All right, and I do want to publicly thank our friends and neighbors that are evaluating us tonight, Pat Breton and Greg, and we look forward to your report. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those, second?
Second.
All those in favor, stand up.